I would like to call for May twenty second, two thousand twenty four, regular board meeting, Fenton Community High School District one hundred to order. May I have a roll call?
Goodrich.
Yes.
Hade.
Yes.
Kovak. Figaroa. Lewis.
Here.
Radzinski.
Here.
Rago.
Here.
We have a corps. The board secretary will not be present at tonight's meeting. I would like to appoint the board member Sylvia Hade as secretary pro temp for this evening.
I'll make that motion. Do we need to motion, sir, or are we going?
We don't get to that later. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Sam, please read our Fenton Mission Beliefs and Bison Way Statements.
Fenton Mission Statement: Cultivates successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. The Fenton Belief Statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when. We provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engage in learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
The next item is recognition. Eric?
Good evening. Tonight it's my pleasure to speak with you on student recognitions for the wrestling program led by Coach Brian Hastings. We have two different ones, the boys' and the girls' programs. The Fenton Boys Wrestling Program has a long and storied history. It's a competition just to get into our packed Wies Wrestling Tournament every year. This year, Thomas Klos and Giovanni Zuniga led the way. Thomas was twenty-two and eight on his way to the IHSA State Finals, and Giovanni was thirty-seven and seven with an impressive twenty-five pins before eventually going on to state. This level of success takes a great deal of patience and focus, and we're proud to celebrate them tonight for elevating Fenton High School's story program. Coach Hastings is here and will speak a little more.
Hi. I just want to recognize these guys, these three seniors that we have. We have an awesome senior class. Giovanni's been with us for four years. His progress has been absolutely outstanding. He's one of the more skilled wrestlers we've ever had in my seventeen years here. He's had ninety-six career wins, two-time conference champion. He's won our Weiss Tournament three times, so just an awesome year. Two-time captain, I think that's probably the most significant thing. He's just a leader, so we are going to miss him along with the ladies. But Giovanni plans to wrestle at trien, and we will miss him tremendously, and he's had an awesome year and an awesome career here. So thank you, Jay-Z.
We also have two of our girls' wrestling athletes here tonight, Sofia Sosa and Yami Penelozza. The Fenton Girls Wrestling Program is relatively new to Fenton, and the two athletes we're honoring tonight have played a pivotal role in both the creation of that program and the dominance of the Fenton program. Sofia Sosa was thirty-three and three this year on her way to qualifying for the IHSA State Finals for her second time, and Yami Penelozza was thirty-five and one this year. Yami went to state for her third consecutive year. Both Sofia and Yami graduated this past Sunday from Fenton, and they've left quite a legacy here at Fenton High School. We wish them both well in their future endeavors, and they will be missed. Again, Coach Hastings.
So just like with Giovanni, these two young ladies are seniors. We're going to miss them tremendously. Sofia has been part of our program for four years. Yami was part of our program for three years. Our girls' wrestling program has had a lot of success in the few years that we've been around. This year, they were eleven and one. We were undefeated in conference duels. We've won a big Niles West Tournament, and these two are definitely the leaders. We place high against high-level competition throughout the Midwest. You know, and same thing with Giovanni. When we're competing in Wisconsin or he's competing in Tennessee, and these ladies are competing against Indiana and Kentucky girls, just doing awesome. So, you know, very proud of them, very proud of their progress. Sofia, like Giovanni, has kind of been the leader of the program for the last two years. She's a two-time captain. She is a two-time Fargo qualifier, so she took third in Freestyle State two times, which is really, really incredible, a great accomplishment. She's going to be heading to Fargo this July. She's going to be wrestling at Quincy University, so carrying on, you know, getting better, carrying on the Fenton tradition. So we've been super proud of her. Yami, like Mr. Karanda mentioned, three-time state qualifier. She won a match downstate each year. Sofia and Giovanni each won a match downstate as well, so that's, they were right in the mix of it. They could have won it, or, you know, or could have probably gone on to, and each of them won a match, so pretty awesome for them. But then Yami, I think her biggest accomplishment was late in the year. She was elevated to captain, so that kind of told us about her growth and her maturation and responsibility and dedication, all that stuff. And, you know, I think that's what all of us are most proud about with Yami. But we're going to miss all three of you guys, unless you guys want to take red shirt ears.
As we continue with the rest of our meeting, I want to briefly explain our intention to appoint an outside counsel to conduct an independent review of actions taken by Fenton Community High, taken by Fenton Community High School District one hundred regarding our former staff member. Nine firms were interviewed on Monday. Myself, the board member Kovak represented the school board in these interviews. Tonight, our board will further review those options in closed session and together choose a firm to approve an open session later in tonight's meeting. Our district council and interim superintendent have and will continue to be available as resources during this process. This ultimately is the board's decision, and we are united in our desire for an objective, impartial assessment of the situation. We have other business that occurs first. We thank you for your patience, and we addressed every item on our agenda tonight. With that being said, Karen, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We have four.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limited evening of thirty minutes total. As a reminder, please address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy.
Anna, I'm so sorry. Okay, Anna S.
Good evening. Good evening. President Lewis, Dr. Benston, members of the board. My name is Anna. I'm a tennis mom. My son attends Fenton as, as well as plays tennis here as well. I would like to thank the board first for all the opportunities you give to our kids, and there are many, clubs, sports, field trips. So thank you. I would also want to thank you guys for the fantastic new field, the track, and then also an advanced thank you for the Stenwing. Thank you so much. But I would like to ask for your consideration to maybe fund a new tennis court for a tennis team. The tennis courts here, I believe, are older than ten years, and they're falling apart, as well as more funding for the tennis team to buy equipment that's been broken and possibly uniforms for the kids. Tennis, according to Sci-Fi News, along with aerobic sports, is one of the best sports to play for, to keep your heart healthy. People who play tennis play tennis their whole life, basically. It's a sport that they maintain. And according to tennismd.com, tennis is one of the most complete sports for all-around health, so you use your body and your mind. And in closing, I just want to thank you for our dedication to our kids. And I just want to say that my other son is coming here in the fall. He also plans on playing tennis. And just this past Saturday night, I brought him and a few friends to the tennis courts to play, and they also played a few days, a few nights ago. So the new future of Fenton tennis is looking amazing. And I just want to ask for the same commitment, commitment and dedication that our kids have here from the board to maybe get the ball rolling on plans for a new tennis court. Thank you.
Julie R. S.
Hi. Good evening. I wanted to say thank you. We've made it through to graduation, and we're happy that the students were safe. You know, everything turned out okay. That was great. But we have to think about our future right now. We really have to keep this issue that's been coming up on the forefront and make sure all of our students feel safe and protected at this school. I know a lot of you had students here. You know, I'm very proud of your girls. You know, I hope you, everybody, they're great students, everything. You know, as parents, we understand the importance of how valuable the education is and how our safety of our students is paramount to all of us, not just people who have children in the school, but also our entire community. I ask you to please consider forming a parental community advisory board to oversee some of the issues that occur at Fenton in the future and have occurred in the past. We really need to have some kind of sounding board for our parents to make sure that if anything comes up, whether it be security, academic, structural, whatever, we have some input from not only our board that we elect, but also our, you know, parents and community members, because not everybody can make the sacrifice of running for a seat on the board. We have to make sure that the issues that, you know, were so hot-button during, you know, the March-April, we have to make sure that it doesn't die down, that we have to find the root cause. What went wrong? What do we have to do different? And what can we do to this to prevent it from happening in the future? This is not something new. It's in the news almost every other day. There are, you know, staff members at many schools having inappropriate relations with underage students. We have to protect our children. We have to make sure that when we send our children to school, they are safe, they know that they have staff members, they have administrators that are out there watching what's going on, and if there is an issue, they're heard. Number one, the students need to feel that their voices are heard. Right now, I feel that students are still a little bit afraid to come up and speak to anyone. There's a lot of, just basically, how can you say it? They just wanted to make it through the year and just have, you know, some peace and quiet. We all did. This was really hard on everyone. So in order to make a fresh start for our fall semester, is there any possible way that we can consider making the student, parent, and community advisory board to also be working with the council that you do hire, just to give them some of our concerns and to, you know, to investigate a little further? And I really appreciate everything you've done, and I hope to hear from you in the future. Thank you.
Larry Anzalone.
Hello. For those of you who are reiterate, my name's Larry Anzalone. I'm a Fenton employee. I've been working here for twenty-three years, and I've lived in Bensonville for thirty-two years. I'm asking this board again to reach out and contact me or any other of your constituents who are also employees of Fenton High School. I would hope that this board doesn't, does have the courage to seek us out, at least have the courage to create a survey for us to fill out, what our concerns are for the future leadership. Please do not behave like this administration and deny that the problem exists so you don't have to address it. I feel for some of you board members who have suffered the consequences from previous unethical and poor leadership from past board presidents. I'm asking again, please reach out. There, I feel that, at least in the Transportation Department, that I work in a hostile environment. I feel like I'm being retaliated just for coming up here and speaking. I try to address all wrongs. As SEIU Union Stewart, I have to address problems in violation of the contract. That makes me a problem for the administration, because I point out things that are not right, that are in the contract. So I put a target on my back just because I am the Union Stewart. But there's other problems that exist here, and if we ignore them, they're not going to go away. We need to address problems here. And, and we, I don't know what else to say, but I'm trying to be heard. There are several employees here that are also Bensonville and Wooddale residents that I've spoke to. They're more than willing to speak out. They're willing to fill out a survey. They, they do fear that there may be consequences in doing so, but they're willing to do it. But this board's got to have the courage to want to listen to us. Thank you.
Mike Malone.
Hello, members of the board, Mr. Board President. I'm sorry, I'm extremely nervous. As you know, my name is on the docket tonight for my punishment regarding an issue that happened on February sixteenth of this year, or last year. I just wanted to give my side of the story, because I didn't know if I would have the opportunity to do that before you guys deliberated. Basically, what happened was I came into work that day not feeling very well, a little nauseous, actually really nauseous. I was informed that my counterpart was, had called in that day, so I knew I was alone until at least eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock. That being said, I went into room three-eleven to take some medicine, lay low for a little while while I felt better, waiting for a call. Stuff like that has happened before with no problems. The only mistake that I had made up till then was not letting my boss or my boss, the secretary, know that I wasn't feeling well and I was going to lay low till some medicine kicked in. But if you needed to get ahold of me, call me on the radio. So no issue. However, during that time, I was in the classroom trying to feel better, I missed a call from my boss. He then texted me, didn't see that. I wasn't on my phone. I didn't have it on, or it wasn't in my hand. Then he called me. So by the time he called me and I saw it, I was already leaving the room, and I went straight to his office to see what had happened, and we took care of that and went about the day. No, no problem. Fast forward to some time, and I had a semi-formal meeting with the vice superintendent and my boss where we had a conversation, talked about how I felt and what happened that day. And the result of that was, look, if you're not feeling good, go home. We'll take care of it. Okay. Fast forward again. We had a very formal meeting with many members of the administration, superintendent, vice superintendent, my boss, legal counsel, my union representatives, two of them, and myself and the steward, where I had again, once again, given my side of the story to what happened. There were some back-and-forth questions and answers. Fast forward, the result of that was a three-week suspension with a five-year probation with a last chance clause stating that I could be fired at any time, giving them permission for any infraction being just caused to terminate me without me giving any, without me, I'm sorry, without me being allowed to grieve or to fight it in any way. So I rejected that. I had a meeting with superintendent, and we had, it was informal. We came up with a, I let him know that I could not accept anything where I would feel like I had a target on my back for a certain amount of time. I don't think that's fair for anybody to come into work, to feel that no matter what they do, they could be fired without them being able to fight it in any way. Fast forward, a one-week suspension with a one-year last chance probation was given. I emailed superintendent, also rejecting that, and basically now the issue is in your hands. So what I'm asking for is the consideration that no employee should have to ever fear coming into work because they feel they may be targeted for something that is not actionable, but I gave my express consent to make it actionable and then take away my ability to fight that, that termination, because it would automatically go to termination. No more suspension, no more anything. Automatically terminated, no grievance, no lawyers, nothing. I give you my permission to fire me on the spot, get your stuff, get out. And nobody in their right mind anywhere on earth would give up all of their rights to fight their employment for coming in a minute late, for spending too much time talking to the librarian when I deliver paper, whatever. It's no way to live. I can't deal with the stress, my health. It's, it's insane to even think that anybody would accept that. So I'm, sorry. So I'm letting the board know and the administration know that any provision given to me with a last chance, where I can be fired for any infraction without any recourse, will not be accepted. Suspension, I understand, yes, it'll hurt. It'll affect my life, but I'll deal with it. We survived COVID. We survived whatever. I got married at twenty-three years old. I know how to be poor. I just want you guys to understand that that provision is completely unfair, and it's just wrong. And especially after there was an email chain sent by legal to my union representatives, when he said that the last chance was the sticking point for myself. The legal said, well, the last chance is the heart of the punishment. So that means that they kind of want me fired. Maybe they couldn't do it during this infraction, but if, if the last chance is the heart of the punishment... the punishment, that means that they're kind of looking for any excuse to get rid of me. So I'm glad that I did not accept that because now I know, he admitted to it basically on email saying, this is what the district wanted, and now it's in your hands. So I don't know what else to say. I don't want to lose this job. I love this job. I grew up in this town. I grew up in this school. I used to flirt with my wife, like, right under those windows. We met here when we were freshmen. My kids go here. They're growing up here. I have four of them. They're all coming through this school. I don't want to go. And that's it. It's up to you guys.
Thank you for your comments. Next item is informational items?
Yes, we're going to start out with our graduation highlights with Dr. Carranda.
Thank you very much. Our graduation was this, this weekend on Sunday. Very nice event. A lot of hard work by the students and a great honor, you know, for graduation and a lot of success. And again, a lot of hard work. We'll go through some statistics of what took place at the ceremony as well, and a lot of that shining through for our students. But it was a great ceremony, beautiful day for it. And when, when we're talking about graduations, we graduated about 315 students. And, you know, it was a great group, a good crowd, and it was nice to have everyone represented there for their achievements. Some of the highlights for the class of 2024 of our 315 graduates. We had 24 seniors who were Illinois State Scholars. We had 42 seniors who are members of the National Honor Society. 54 of our seniors earned the Seal of Bileiteracy and 19 additional earned the Commendation Recognition. Three seniors reported that they are joining the U.S. Military. And of our senior class, 11,286 and a half hours of community service were completed over their four years. 19 are required. Four of our seniors had over 200 hours each, 16 at over 100 hours each, and 31 completed over 50 hours each from their required 19. So it's a huge number of giving back to the community, which is, which is extremely, which is extremely profound. And also, reported back to us, our senior class was awarded almost $3 million in scholarships and grants for their future endeavors, which is also a fantastic and astonishing number. Again, a lot of hard work from our class. And again, the number's up there. They, they've earned quite a bit for their future, and we wish them very, very well as they continue on after Fenton. Our next item, we have our student handbook changes. Every year, our conduct committee meets. It's a committee comprised of teachers, dean's office, parents, students, and so on. And that group meets for multiple meetings every year to talk about our student code of conduct for the conduct committee, which is in our annual student handbook. The, the change the committee came through this year, it's on our current handbook, page 61, is our, regarding our behavior step system. We currently have a step system for disciplinary action, which is 20 steps currently. The committee met and are replacing that or recommending to replace that with a 10-step system. And within the system, the idea behind it is as disciplinary infractions occur, there is a, a sequence of events and a course of events that allow for a lot of intervention and working with the student, various staff members, the families, and so on, in order to address and help with any current situations that take place and the future for those students. And so, as you'll see between step one and 10, the parent contact is the essential piece when speaking with the student and talking about major infractions that may take place. There are also a couple teams in here that we'll talk about in a minute and what they do. But basically, the first couple steps, steps one and two of an infraction, disciplinary infraction. The dean meets with the student. They talk through what happened, whatever, if there are consequences involved and so on. On the third step, the student is referred to what is called our problem-solving team. That team consists of the dean of students, multiple counselors, social workers, instructional coach, and so on. And that team then works with, works together to problem solve and help that student. And they meet back with the student. The essential piece there is our student services staff is also involved. And when they talk about that, then they take it through to the next step, and they work with the student and recontact the family. If additional items occur, it proceeds through step four. And then on step five, if there are continuing items, there would be a parent meeting with the dean, the counselor, and the social worker. This is one of the primary changes from the other step system that we currently have in place. So this will be an intervention meeting at the halfway point. If things after that point continue, then it is referred to our Bison Intervention Team. On that team, it is the school nurse, the counselors, the social workers, the school psychologist. I sit on that team as part of the student services department as well as our director of special education. And we meet as a group to then talk about what has taken place so far for interventions, what other interventions can be tried and put into place, and continue to work with the family and engage with them and collaborate on that, on that part of the process. It continues on, if the steps continue, to a point where step eight, then the, the original group that met at step five then meets as well with the principal. If it does continue to step 10, then it's a meeting with the superintendent. And again, at each point, intervention is discussed. Various plans are put into place through different tiers of intervention are put in place to continue that. Students can also reduce their steps on the system. So if a student makes it to step three, for example, they talk to problem-solving team, but then five school days go by, they go down to step two. So there is a way to work back down the step system, which is the idea behind making that change so that students who are working with the office, staff, the deans, and so on, and they're continuing on by, by correcting the behavior, not having anything take place, then they work their way back down to step zero, so to speak, so that there is that ability in there. Again, our problem-solving team and bit team, problem-solving team meets weekly about students that come up through that team, and anyone on the team or teachers can recommend to that. And the Bison Intervention Team meets every two weeks, including with our MTSS coordinator, in order to put interventions in place and talk about supports that they can have through the problem-solving team and continue to intervene with students. So that's what those two teams do, either weekly or biweekly. And the idea behind that is to really help engage with the student, understand what the needs are, and help try to correct and help with anything that's going on, as well as engaging the parents in that conversation as a partnership. And that's our step system that'll come up a little later this evening as well for your discussion. The other handbook change that's coming into place is a, it's more of a language addition. As, as reads on our no class, no play policy under co-curricular activities, this whole paragraph is currently in our handbook. It also matches the board policy. The last three words are not in the handbook, but they are in the board policy. So the other change is to add whichever is longer to the end of this paragraph and into the handbook for its production into the coming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Carranda. Just to reiterate, later in the meeting, there'll be a board action requested on these annual handbook changes. We appreciate your support. These are rather mundane changes this, this school year, but we'll certainly, you know, entertain any questions later on regarding this matter. Okay, I think I'm up next. We want to celebrate some good news that came across about a month and a half ago. We are listed in U.S. News and World Report as one of the best high schools in America. Now, you might ask, what does that mean? And certainly, we are here to tell you what it means. It means we're in the top 40% nationally. There are six indicators. College readiness, college curriculum breadth, state assessment proficiency, state assessment performance, underserved student performance, and graduation rate. Next slide, please. And Fenton ranked above or near numerous other DuPage County high schools within the area where we would say are similar high schools, similar size and demographics. We also want to note that they highlighted our 90% graduation rate, college curriculum, and 43% of students took at least one AP exam. Of course, we'd like to see that higher. We'd like all of our students to give that a try, but we know that we're going to continue to work toward that worthy goal. But this is a standard that's recognized throughout the country. We were recognized last year and in some past years, but quite frankly, not every year we received this. So we want to let the public know that we're proud of our students for their efforts and obviously the rest of our teaching staff for, for making this possible. Okay. Might be a little kind of difficult to see, but this, these are our Board of Education meeting dates for next school year. We've looked at it fairly closely. We're trying to take holidays into consideration. We even took into consideration Bruce's annual budget type thing. So you'll notice we moved up the one in August to the 21st. We are not asking to take action tonight from the board, but we are asking you to take these meeting dates compared to your own personal calendars, and hopefully that these dates work out throughout the year. If you have questions, please reach out to Karen or myself. But then, in the June board meeting is when we would approve these Board of Education meeting dates. And next, okay, next we have our groundbreaking STEM Wing update. This is hot off the presses. We were literally just out there. It was a wonderful event. We had not only our, our board members, members of administration, but also of school, or, I'm sorry, officials from Wooddale, Bensonville Library, and also Bensonville Park District were there, as well as teachers and other staff members, and even some, some kids who literally will be in the STEM Wing at some point in their lives, young kids. So they got a chance to also take some pictures with the shovels and the hard hats. So that happened a little bit earlier today. We're excited for the work that's going to be done, that's going to be starting here pretty much as soon as school's out. We'll turn over to Mr. Harmil.
Thank you, Dr. Batson. So we just wanted to recognize Mr. Garcia, Luis Garcia, our business teacher here at Fenton. This is, he's completing his third year with us. Successful years, right? All, all three years very successful. So he's going into his fourth year in the fall, and he, he's completed tenure with our district. So we're very proud of Mr. Garcia and all the good work he's done. Some of you may remember him from things like the burger battle that he's done with the, the students in marketing. So we're just very proud of him and all the good work he's doing here with our students. So just want to recognize him.
Thank you. And next, we have security cameras, cameras with Dr. Batson, who's going to make his way to share with us our, our plans for an improved security system.
Here we go. There we go. I asked Dr. Benson if we could add this to our agenda, just as an FYI. It's not anything that we need to have board approval for because of the threshold of purchasing and whatnot. But I did want to make you aware that we're upgrading our security camera system for the first time in quite a few years. So if you see this on the purchasing blogs and whatnot, you'll, you'll understand what it is. But this is not only to provide a new backend system for recording all our security camera information, but to also expand. This will double the size of our system so we can add twice as many cameras. And why would we want to do that? Well, we have this new STEM Wing coming onboard. We have these new athletic facilities that we want to protect. And we just have some other areas that we would like to add some additional cameras to. So this will, this will really help us in that way. In addition to that, this will also eventually, once it's fully implemented, be able to give us the opportunity to, to have an, an option for the police department, for example, as they're responding to something, be able to tap into our camera system and see what's happening in our building. So it's all in an effort to improve the safety and security of our building, of our students, of our staff, and our, our community here. So just wanted to draw this to your attention. I think it's a, it's a great project that we're going to be doing this summer. And, you know, I appreciate you letting me chat with you about it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Batson. Next, we have our anticipated summer workshop hours.
So the school year's coming to a close. We had graduation on Sunday. Tuesday was the last day of classes for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and for teachers. And we have exams Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So we're almost to summer, but the summer hours is symbolic of the fact that a lot of hard work happens from our teachers and staff over the summer. I think a lot of times there's a perception of teachers just take the summers off, but that definitely is not true. This is where some of the best time for teachers to actually engage with, like, revamping their curriculum. It gives them the time to be able to do that. So we offer this at Fenton this year. Approximately 70 of our certified staff applied for summer hours, and we're getting, you know, they're committing to close to eight, 1,800 hours of work. So of course, there's work that goes on with existing courses. The majority of that work, our focus this year, if you remember, was EL Strategies for All. So many courses are going to be implementing those strategies into their curriculum over the summer, working as teams. But then we also have some special programs, like the grading committee is going to work on some stuff, SEL, our instructional coaches, our instructional tech coaches. So those are all part of summer hours. We also have teachers who are interested in developing new courses. So that's when, you know, they get some time over the summer to do that. And then if you remember, courses like Latino Studies that will be starting next year, they have some time this summer to really make sure that they have everything in order for when they start. Things like Latino Studies, Computer Science has a couple new courses. So that's all part of this work that gets done. This is, again, part of the consent agenda, which will come up. But I just wanted to let you know, like, what teachers and our specialists are working on. We also have some summer workshop hours, which means we're paying some people to do a little bit of work in person. It's more meeting time. So we have our district equity leadership team that Mr. Rubio is going to be running. They'll be coming back together on August 8. That's made up of different teachers, staff members, and specialists. And then our English IV team is going to be doing a little bit of work with the College of DuPage, which is really exciting. We've been doing some ongoing work, but we're going to be partnering with them to make sure that our students who graduate and take English IV, when they go to COD, they will not have to take any rudimentary classes, rudimentary English classes when they get there. They'll be able to start right in English 1101. So that's a really good collaboration that we're excited to be working with them. So that's where some of those hours will go to. So we're excited about this work. And if you have any questions, we can talk about it in the consent agenda.
All right.
One slide, thank you.
So the Affordable Care Act report, so this year, this is a yearly mandated report required by the federal government, where we research how many of our part-time workers qualify for the, for the ACA. So this year, five of our part-time employees qualified for insurance through this program. So basically, they're considered part-time, but they work more than 30 hours per week on average throughout the year. So two of our staff accepted of the five and three rejected. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that we, we do this yearly, just make sure that we're offering this for our part-time staff that are putting in those extra hours. Go to the next slide, please. So we have a FOIA that was completed. This was basically, this is resolved, and they wanted a copy of the current school board legal liability insurance policy. So that has been resolved.
And we have no other. So we can keep moving to the consent agenda.
Next item, consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rego?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Bradzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich? Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education award Arbor Management Incorporated as the food service management company provider commencing July 1, 2024 through through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with an estimated bid price of five hundred and ninety, one hundred and eighty-eight and twenty-four cents?
I'll make the motion.
Suck it.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Our next item is appointing a new, next item is resolute and appointing school treasurer. Want to add anything, Bruce, before?
Yeah, just, this is an annual appointment that the Board needs to make for someone to serve a one-year term, and it can be a non-Board member serving this capacity. It has been the practice of the Board to appoint the chief school business officer as the school treasurer. And should the Board agree with that and appoint the chief school business officer as the treasurer, the task resolution would need to be acted on. And that resolution basically appoints the school treasurer to this position for one year, starting July first.
Your honor, it's hearing. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution appointing the school treasurer as presented, Bruce Martin?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. This is just a real quick update. There's no action that needs to be taken. However, when we had to cancel school in March, we needed to add in a Teacher Institute Day on Tuesday, May the twenty-eighth, which is obviously right after Memorial Day. Does not affect students. Students' last day is still Friday. However, we will have a Teacher Institute Day next Tuesday. That will finalize our school calendar.
Our next item is security cameras. We have already discussed the security cameras and informational items, so we will be skipping this item on our agenda. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five student handbook changes to ensure compliance with new laws?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five fiscal year salary adjustments for at-will, five percent increase, and bus drivers, five percent increase?
I'll make that motion.
Suck it.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves, based on the bids received for bid release one, recommend awarding contracts to the three firms for doors, frames, hardware, epoxy flooring, and elevator bid packages for the Fenton High School STEM addition project as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal from CEC Environmental Incorporated to complete the Abastos Abatement projects as noted in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Does anyone have any committee reports?
The Bensonville Foundation is scheduled to meet tomorrow. I am not sure if I will be able to attend as to some issues at home. We'll check with Member Kovak and see if he can attend. We don't have a heavy agenda, so if I got to miss a meeting, that's not a bad one for us, I believe.
I can give a brief update. I attended the last Netsac Board meeting about two weeks ago. It was, they had approved some salary increases for administration, and also a presentation for the transition program was given.
The next Board meeting, Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM, with the Finance Facility Committee meeting at six PM, prior to the regular Board meeting. There will be two discussion slash action items when we come out from closed session, including the appointment of an outside counsel to conduct an independent review of actions taken by Fenton Community High School District one hundred regarding our former staff member. Trust in your local school is paramount, and this independent review is another step towards rebuilding that trust. May I have a motion in a second to go into closed session for the following: five Illinois CS one twenty slash two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District one hundred; two, five Illinois CS one twenty-two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Rago?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
May I have a motion and a second to go back into open session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Hade?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed, back in the open session. May I have a motion that the Board of Education considers the approval of addendum to administrative employment agreement for the interim superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves Francic PC as Fenton Community High School District 100's council for independent review.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Raggo?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say a.
Aye.
Thank you all and good night.